...with liberty and justice for all.
As you may know, the prayer for the open meeting rotates between the trustees. And ironically, my prayer always seems to come during senior week. I don't know whether that's set or whether it's coincidental, but for the third year in a row, I get to do the senior week prayer. So I would like to read my annual prayer for our seniors. I'd like to offer a prayer of gratitude for what the seniors have done for us as grandparents, parents, aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters, and friends. I'd like to offer a prayer of thanks for their decades of contributions to our society. I would like to offer a prayer for our happy, healthy, comfortable lives and that they continue to be an important, vital, and inspirational part of our community for many years to come. Amen.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you very much, Donna. And that is completely by coincidence because you are not old. You are young and vivacious and energetic and...
So are our seniors.
Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Village Hall. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, May 12th, 2015. Just a couple of notes before we get started. You know, we all do have other lives and sometimes we have to get to those as priorities and sometimes they come in chunks for us. So tonight, I just want to note that Trustees Goleo, Flynn, and Rosillo are all three excused from the meeting tonight with other commitments and priorities, but we do have a strong quorum or a quorum of four, so we can do the village of the villages business tonight, which we will do. I also do need to take an amendment to amend the agenda. This will be adding item number 16, which is a motion to amend the agenda to consider a resolution adopting a home rule request asking the state legislature to adopt Senate Bill S. 4281. This would be to authorize specified villages in the town of Greenberg and Mount Pleasant to adopt local laws to impose a hotel motel occupancy tax in such villages. So I need a motion to amend the agenda for that item, number 16. Is there a motion? Trustee O'Donnell, Second Trustee Cassell, discussion, all in favor? Okay, that passes and we'll get to that item and explain what it is at the end. Okay, we don't have any presentations tonight or public hearings, so before we get to matters requiring action, we'll have courtesy of the floor. Is there anybody who cares to address the board tonight? Yes, Art. Good to see you.
Art Manukian, 42 Florence Avenue. Can you turn the mic off, please? Turn it on.
On.
I got it. I got it. Art Manukian, 42 Florence Avenue. I sent an email about a day or two ago telling you what I was going to come in and ask you about. The planning board passed a resolution on April 2nd to ask you folks to declare a moratorium for properties abutting the aqueduct. And I just, a lot of people think that's a great idea, me included. It's a six-month moratorium, according to the resolution, and to give the village a chance to take another look at how we're going to deal with applications for building along the aqueduct. So I wanted just to find, open up the discussion a little bit for the public, sake of the public also, is to find out how you folks feel about that and how, if you feel really positive about it, if something could be done quickly before, let's say, 100 Main Street is another, becomes another project like 66, 68, and I think it was 78, that there was a lot of controversy about. This one, I don't think has, I don't think they actually have a formal application and they're just kind of testing the waters right now. So that's where I am and I'd like to know where you guys are.
Sure, I'll start with that. It's not on the agenda, so I think it may come back to the agenda. Art, we're aware that a resolution was passed by the, but there's very little detail. In fact, there's no detail at all. So I think my position and position with the board in terms of when we would bring anything like this back to the agenda is you don't take something like that lightly. There should be, there should be very clear specifics and reasoning as to why there should be a moratorium anywhere in the village. You just don't take that lightly. So we're going to direct the village administrator, Marcus, to send a letter to the planning board, asking them to be specific about why they're proposing it, where they're proposing it, what are the issues and what are they trying, what do they feel can be accomplished. And I think with that, then we can have a discussion, but we can't have a discussion with you right now. I don't know. If I came up to you and I say, hey, hey, Art, I'll give you a call on the phone, I think we should buy IBM stock. You gonna go out and buy it? No, you're not. You're gonna want to know why, what are the reasons why. And that's all we're saying. So I understand where you, that people are concerned about it, but as far as 100, and then I'll let the other boards, because I'm just, this is my two cents, one opinion.
Sure.
But I think it makes sense. We really need to get more information. I did watch the meeting where they passed that resolution. There was no discussion. It was at the end of a long meeting. It was ad hoc and it just sort of seemed random, to be honest. So I, and I will say that to the planning board, that, you know, if they feel that way, well, then you gotta be more specific. You gotta really be presented in a thoughtful, thoughtful way and then we'll certainly take a serious look at it and we'll have a public hearing and we can talk about it. Maybe it is a good idea. As far as the 100, I think you're right. There hasn't been a formal application and they're having some good dialogue. I was actually working here late last night and I went out to the, I'm just sharing the story with you because I think it's relevant, to the parking lot and the chair of the, and I'm not speaking for the ARB at all. The chair of the ARB was there, Ayr was there, two, another member, and I bumped into him and I said, "How's it going?" And they were, it was on their agenda last night, I think, 100. They had more discussion. And Ayr showed me a little rendering of what he had been working on to, you know, kind of his, their thoughts and ideas. And I was really impressed and they were really excited about where they were getting with this project. To me, it seemed like it was moving in a direction that people were getting more comfortable.
Okay.
The barn, you know, which they have some, I think, their own ideas about whether it's really historic or not, but the incorporation of that kind of a structure, to me, sounds like that's what people really want to see and the ARB's trying to make that happen. So I got the impression that the moratorium never came up. In fact, they're very excited about moving this forward in a way that's going to be really exciting for the village and people are gonna, you know, maybe like it. Now, there's still some people that are gonna maybe not like it, but, so I'm just sharing that story with you. Moratoriums, to me, just don't project real positive things. Now, maybe there's a, there's a, there's a need for it and we need to get that, but that's, I've spoken way too long about it, but I wanted to, I always liked the way you approached the board. You're always very, very thoughtful.
Thank you.
And you don't come, you don't come in before us without things that are really, that I think have been really important.
Thank you.
So I wanted to give you a good answer, so. Any other boards have any other opinions, different from mine or whatever?
It's not that much different because I'm the liaison to the planning board. So I've been around hearing, you know, a lot of the stuff that's going on. I'm sure the impetus for that resolution came from a series of meetings before that. But as it stands, we don't have anything written, I don't believe, from the planning board specifically asking for the moratorium, as the mayor said, what they want, why, et cetera, et cetera. I believe the planning board is working on that, but until we actually see what they have in mind, I don't think we can render any kind of a yes or no until we actually see what exactly they're asking of us.
There is a short resolution. It was just finished. I think it went back and forth with a number of different board members, but it's not detailed either.
Yeah, we haven't...
You haven't even seen that yet.
No.
I think it was just finished late last week.
That's correct.
So we'll get that to you and then Marcus can request some more information. I think that's what...
And I just wanted to add that I would not, what I'd like to see from the planning board is also if they say six months, well, what's going to happen in six months? What will, what will change in six months? Six, you know, nothing could be different in six months and we, what have we learned? So kind of not just the purpose, but what they hope to gain by a moratorium in detail. Thank you.
Okay, makes sense. I agree that there's work to be done by the planning board. And as long as you let them know that you're expecting that, I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we have a problem. Donna does a great job as liaison to the, to the planning board. I don't, we don't have a, we really don't have a communication problem with the planning board.
Perfect.
I'm tempted to say, I'm the new guy on the block and just to say what they said, but what's important to me is an understanding of what's expected from it.
Right.
What do we expect to happen? And is it at the end of six months that whatever it is, if it doesn't happen, what's going to happen then? Do we extend it, you know, for another six months? It's way, way, way too amorphous and we need to really understand all the potential negatives that may come from it as well, as well as the positives, so.
Yes, agreed. Thank you.
Thanks, Art. Thanks very much. Anybody else care to address the board? Yes, David.
David Groundlake, 156 Ogden Avenue. Just want to relay some concerns I have with regard to the building of the mini-city known as Rivertown Square. First off, and I'm going to talk about the safety issues first because those have been what I've been detailing since day one, but I drive home pretty much between 6:30, 6:45, 7 o'clock every night and they're done working, but every night I see gates open into the area. Last night, I was walking the dog at 7:45 and there was a gate open further down Ogden, past Danforth, and I'm very concerned about that. There's large mounds, there's large holes, there are big machines and I don't want people, kids, or whatever, getting in there and getting hurt, lost, or whatever. So that is a major concern of mine. On Saturday, I was driving at 8:30 in the morning. I was leaving, I was trying to make a left down Danforth from Ogden Avenue and there was a big semi-truck parked along the gate on the right and there was no one, no cones out, no emergency, anything, no one directing traffic. I mean, you know, and I've been saying since day one that my biggest concern is safety and I'm seeing major issues with their building. Issues aside from safety, I'd like to bring to your attention, on Saturday night at like 8:20 at night, they were building. I got home, you saw me at dinner, so you know when I got home, and they were still, they were still doing their thing at 8:20 at night on a Saturday. I'm pretty sure that's a little on the late side. I don't know exactly what parameters we set, but that seems late to me. And I'd like to reiterate, I think, you know, last time I came up, I said, one of the first things they should have done was to try and put trees up to build the barrier so I don't have to see mounds of gravel and I don't have to see and hear as much noise. And the answer was, well, you can't plant now, it's winter. Well, it's not winter anymore, it's spring. And I'd like to know at what point they're going to have to do that, or are they just going to wait till the end? Because they, to me, have done everything that they want to do and nothing to help this community since day one. And I think if they would do things like put in the sidewalks, start those projects, start putting up the trees to balance out, I think it would be helpful and I think the town would appreciate it. You know, I don't know where else to air my grievances on these, so I'm coming to you guys. I'm sure you have a much better line to them than I do, so those are my thoughts at the moment. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Let's try to address some of those. I mean, I would imagine that sidewalks and building trees right now, a little tough on a construction site, they're just, the whole thing is under construction. That would be a safety, real safety issue and the trees would never make it. I mean, it just, so that's probably the issue there. I'm not the expert, but I hear what you're saying. I think at some point...
...anything at the top of Ogden Avenue, so why can't they put up a buffer there?
We will, we will look into that. How about gates being open and what, are there more things the village can be doing in sort of policing or just having, okay?
A couple of things on gates being open. I'll talk to the contractor and that's not a problem, we have a subcontractor, E O Q, who's a pretty large corporation, so I'll talk to him about that. Hours of operation, if there are issues, you can always call the police department, open 24/7. 8:30 is too late, just call the police department, they'll get them, they'll get them to stop working. I've had a complaint once before, they were working too early, I contacted the contract and it stopped. So just call the police department when it comes to something else or call me and I'll deal with it.
Anybody else care to address the board? Okay, thanks very much for your comments. Moving to matters requiring action. Action item number one is to consider a motion to approve a request from Ms. Jennifer Collier to have a block party on Shady Lane on Saturday, June 13th, 2015. I know these are run by the departments too, just to make sure there's no conflict. So I think we're good on this and so I'll take a motion to approve Ms. Collier's request for a block party. That's right in your, down in your area there, Kath, right? Trustee, Trustee K., Second Trustee O'Donnell, discussion, all in favor? And that passes with four ayes, which is all we need tonight. That's all we have, right? It's a very controversial item.
You're gonna raise your arms up.
They're gonna be sweating it out out there. Action item number two is to consider a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Jazz Forum Arts to provide concerts for a cost not to exceed $10,000. This has been an annual contribution that the village does make in an agreement with Jazz Forum Arts. Of course, great Mark Morganelli organizes this event. Fortunately, he does still have a great venue here in Dobbs Ferry to, to, to put on what is always a great show. Again, this year, it'll be at the Master School Campus along Clinton Avenue. The Waterfront Park just will not be available for these types of things this year, unfortunately. We've communicated that with Mark and I know he's very much looking forward to coming back to the waterfront next year, but from what I understand and talking with Mark, the Master School venue works out pretty well. They've been happy there, so, but hopefully not happy enough not to come back to the waterfront next year.
Exactly.
So, okay, that's the background. I'll take a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Jazz Forum Arts. Trustee O'Donnell, Second. Trustee Cassell, discussion, all in favor? That passes with four ayes. Action item number three is to consider a motion to authorize Half Moon to use the waterfront parking lot for 50 spaces. This will be from Mother's Day till Labor Day, only after 5:00 PM, and for this, they will pay a fee of $3,500 to the village. They've done this each year and it's a, you know, it's a good, a good neighborly on their part and it also really does help kind of direct, not to become a free-for-all down there. They're very designated areas where they need to park the cars on a, they have a, you know, the...
An area.
Right, an area to do that. The word I'm looking for is when they drop their car off and somebody else...
Valet.
A valet, yes, thank you. Is really, really kind of a service that they're doing, they're providing, so.
No, not really. The idea is to do a valet now onto the park, because in the old days, the people park in the park and then walk through that dirt path into the parking lot. So the issue is right now is because the waterfront is still closed, that they're going to do valet service now. When the park is opened again, then they can walk through that pathway into their, into their area. We actually created a pathway now so the dirt path is gone.
And there's going to be a proper gate and a proper fence there.
And, yeah, then they can walk in and out to the area, correct.
Okay. Thanks for, for sorting that out.
I just had, I had one question, which was... I just want to make sure that the, their 50 spaces don't conflict with Hudson Social.
No, their spatial spaces, if you, is closer to Willa Point, right where the, as you're coming, when you make a U-turn going back out, their 50 spaces lie along the waterfront on that side. Hudson Social is more right across the street from, front of Hudson Social. So they're away from each other.
Good, thank you. And they're, and they're aware, Hudson Social is aware of this arrangement, so they'll work it out with, with Half Moon and they're all coordinated, so.
Good.
Okay, so is there a motion to, to authorize Half Moon to use the waterfront parking lot for the 50 spaces and for this, they'll pay a fee of $3,500. Trustee K., Second Trustee O'Donnell, discussion, all in favor? Passes with four ayes. Thank you. Action item number five is to accept, consider acceptance of the annual MS4 stormwater report. And this is as required by the New York State...
Skip, skip.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consider a resolution approving the tax warrant for the 2015 tax year. Action item number four. This is pretty basic, right?
Yes, we do this every year. We have adopted a budget, we have to adopt a warrant, which authorizes us to actually start sending out the tax bills, which will be sent out there in this month.
Okay, and it's, it's written out here in resolution form, which is just standard...
Yes, just saying the total amount to be collected.
Total amount to be collected, right? Which in this case is $12,331,000 and $627. So I'll take a motion to approve the tax warrant for the 2015 tax year as spelled out in Resolution 2015. Trustee K., Second. Trustee Cassell, discussion, all in favor? That passes with four ayes. Okay, action item number five is to consider acceptance of the annual MS4 stormwater report as required by the New York State Department of Environmental Control.
Just a brief, a brief explanation on this one. We have to do this every year. The DEC requires the stormwater report to be done, but they had a DPW. You have a report that actually be filed with the state and also posted on the website. Gary's here to give you a brief explanation of what's been completed to meet the mandates of the federal government.
Basically, it was created to ensure water quality from all the municipalities, villages, cities, and towns in state. And what we have to do is list all the catch basins clean throughout the year, amount of streets swept, mileage of streets swept, any educational programs that are given throughout the year. Any cleanup days are published in that also. So if anybody wants to go on the website and look at it, there's a lot of good information in there, like, and it also gives the village enforcement powers to pursue all the outflows and make sure that the water quality is maintained.
And this is another good share of service. We actually use the same engineer. How many other municipalities are with us?
I think we're with, probably about six.
So we got, so we all join together, hire the same engineer, we're all doing the same reports, and we all share the services. And we actually got grants for this in the past to do some work.
Right, we'll also just share training on Friday last week. All the municipalities got together, Irvington, Oarsley, Hastings, myself.
Okay, great. Thanks for the background information. Good work. This is all good. And I'll take a motion to accept the annual MS4, MS4 stormwater report as submitted. Is there a motion? Trustee Cassell, Second. Trustee O'Donnell, discussion, all in favor? That passes with four ayes. Action item number six, I think we may need Gary back on this one too, is to consider a motion to award the bid for 99 Cedar Street. This would be for roof replacement to the lowest bidder, in this case, Donald W. Brown Home Improvements LLC. This would be an amount of $22,950 as recommended by DPW General Foreman Gary Gardner, who's up here to give us a little bit more information on that. And the funds would be expended from the 2014 Building Improvements Capital Fund, so. Gary, a little more background on this.
What this is, is the, there's six, I'm sorry, five bays off to the side of the old garage center at 99 Cedar, and the roof has been leaking for a couple of years and it's gotten to the point where it's worse. We tried patching it, it was hit by a tree, we fixed it, and as we still own it, we really have to maintain it. What it's doing now, it's starting to rot away the base of the roof up there, so, you know, this money's going to have to be spent on repairing it.
And this section of the garage is what we use for storage?
And we're still using it, actually, for storage.
And we're still using it.
The village is?
Yeah, we're still using it.
We're not leasing that?
We're leasing three quarters of it and then the one bay that's left, we're actually utilizing that for the meter storage and anything we have to do with fixing them. So what's happened is it's getting real damp in there, so it's going to need to be repaired.
Okay. Any questions for Gary?
I just had one question on Brown's bid. He had an optional but recommended replacing three skylights or closing the three skylights. Is that something that...
It's something, we have skylights there, some of them are cracked and they weren't in good shape, so I said, well, maybe we, if we replace them versus just closing them up, I thought it might be cheaper to close them up. And we were trying not to spend as much money as we can down there, but, so what he said is he, it really doesn't matter too much, it's, it's not a big cost, so since they were in existence, it may be easier, actually, it may cost a little more, but easier to replace them, rather than try to put decking down and then just completely close them up and then you lose all the natural light in there.
So should this number be increased by the $28 that...
Well, that's gonna be, you know, that'll be up to the decision when we get up there and start taking it apart.
Got it.
Because you'll know more once you get into that.
Yep, yep.
So I kind of can't exactly hammer that down, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be a big difference. We'll see, like he said, he said it may be easier to close them or it may, you know, we got to see once we get into the decking underneath the roof.
Great.
But we'll be able to make that decision at that time.
So it might be a change order, what your recommendation?
Yeah, there might be a change, yeah. I'm going to try to go the cheapest way out with it, so it's, you know, you get a decent job, but I may come back with a change order, I'm not 100% sure. He's not going to really know until we get into it and start ripping it off.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, then I'll take a motion, we'll move this ahead, see if we move this ahead. A motion to award the bid for 99 Cedar Street roof replacement as outlined by the DPW General Foreman. This will be to Donald W. Brown Home Improvements for an amount of $22,950. And the funds will be expended from the 2014 Building Improvements Capital Fund. Is there a motion? Trustee K., Second. Trustee O'Donnell, discussion, all in favor? That passes with four ayes. Action item number seven is to consider a motion authorizing a change order and credit to the contract with Abbott and Price in a net amount of $560.57. This is related to work being done for the comfort station down at the new waterfront park. And I'll let Village Administrator Marcus Sorano explain sort of how it all adds up and nets out here.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Item number seven and eight are interrelated with each other, so I'll try to explain both of them in one shot and try to make it a little quicker. During the construction of the comfort station, the original proposal had the emergency generator for the pump required by the DEC for the comfort station to have the transfer switch at the comfort station. During the review and looking at the possibilities, we felt it was much better to have the transfer switch and the generator at the train station, then it'll create electricity for the entire waterfront, the comfort station, the lights in the parking lot and everything else, versus just the comfort station. So what you see here for the credit is the removal of that transfer switch and the work required to put the generator at the comfort station. That's the Abbott and, that's the Abbott and Price change order. Then you also have, that's the credit of $3,470.50. The increase of $4,031.07 was due to, as they were digging for the foundation of the comfort station, they found substantial logs and tree trunks that had to be removed, discarded, then had to bring topsoil back in to fill the voids that were removed with that. So that's created the $4,000 increase. So net effect is $560.57 increase to Abbott and Price. Related back to number, number eight, which is the next item, is the change order to put the transfer switch at the train station, and that's an amount of $8,738.81, much higher capacity with the generator, and that'll run everything except for the train station itself. That's the responsibility of the tenant to do whatever he wants to that property or for the, for the building, but at least we'll be able to run all the lights at the parking lot, all the lights at the waterfront, and the electricity at, at the, at the comfort station. So those are interconnected. It's a recommendation of all the consultants, Gary, the police chief, myself, and our consultants, that we approved both of these change orders to get the electrical work beginning, because as everybody has been down there, Connaissance is actually now installing the electricity, so we're very close to get the go-ahead to finish up the electricity, the electrical upgrade for the waterfront. Hopefully, I explained that pretty well.
Yes, I think you did. Excellent. I just had two questions. One is if we approve this work, will it be completed by the anticipated opening date?
At the hope side, as long as Connaissance finishes their work, we're ready to go. And as everybody's seen, the Connaissance have been working to 8, 9 o'clock at night to try to get their work done. So the hopes are that everything will be done. Our electrician is just waiting for Connaissance to energize the, the power at the other side of the train tracks and then we can start taking off.
Okay. These aren't the first change orders that the board has had to consider and manage during the construction phase of the project, which you've all been very much involved here. How does this make us stand in terms of the overall budget of the waterfront?
Our budget right now is right on target, per se. We had additional funds, but all that's been eating away little by little by the change orders. We're right on target as we stand right now. And don't forget, we also have matching funds from the state still that were being used, And don't forget, we also have matching funds from the state still that were being used. So it's also, this is 50/50. So you say $8,000 change order is really like a $4,000, but we're 50/50. There's funds available for that. But we're getting very close to getting right within the pennies or a little bit in the red. We'll be monitoring it, and we'll know more about the next couple of weeks where we all will stand with the budget.
Great. And at the end of the day, we'll report all that, the real bottom line back. Okay, great. Thanks for that. Any other questions for Marcus? All right, then, let's see where we go with this. Action item number seven, then, we'll start there, is to consider a motion, take a motion to authorize the change order as outlined by the village administrator for the credits to the contract with Abbott and Price as well as the increase. This will be for a net increase of $560.57. Is there a motion? Trustee Kay, Second Trustee O'Donnell, discussion? All in favor? That passes with four ayes. And action item number eight is to, is a motion, I'll take a motion authorizing a change order to the contract with D&amp;M Electrical as outlined by the village administrator. This is with D&amp;M Electrical Contractors to upgrade the emergency lighting for the waterfront. And this would be in the amount of $8,738.81. Is there a motion? Trustee Cassell, Second Trustee O'Donnell, all in favor? That passes with four ayes. Thanks, Marcus. Action item number nine, consider resolution authorizing the village to enter a community choice aggregation program. We're gonna modify this a little bit. I think what I'd like to do here, if we can, is I'm gonna defer to Trustee O'Donnell, who has been a longstanding member of the Energy Task Force and is the liaison to the task force. Would you like to give us a little bit of just a background on this first, and then we will do a proper presentation when maybe Nina and other representatives, and I think Leo was meant to be here or might be here as well, and then we can really talk about this.
Actually, Leo won't be here, but Glenn will be. But I haven't, are you Glenn? I've not met Glenn, so I, you know, I'm sitting there shooting in the dark. So we don't have anything here right now. And the first thing to say is that there was never an intention for it to be a resolution tonight, but to present the idea to the board and to the community as to what this is. And if you don't mind, I can just give the real shorthand version of what it is, which is, in essence, it's the giving the village and all the residents therein to act as one unit when purchasing electricity and gas. So that the concept of volume pricing, where you get a lot of people together to buy things, that's what this would do. And also, at the same time, and this is part of Sustainable Westchester, was designated by the state as the first agency to be able to offer this, also allows you to purchase electricity that is generated from renewable sources, solar, hydro, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's the basic idea of it. It's very complex. And I will make sure that the board gets a copy of the presentation beforehand. And hopefully, we can reschedule that for our next meeting.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. Action item number 10 is to consider a motion approving an IMA with Hastings and Irvington for a marine unit and maintenance of a police boat. We looked, we had this presented actually on the agenda last time we met, but there were still some issues with just working through the IMA agreements, some language that sort of needed to be cleaned up. We did, though, get a good background outline from the Chief Gelardi, Dobbs Ferry Police Chief, on this marine unit and the boat, which obviously comes with it. And it seems like a really good and timely idea, primarily because of the fact that, you know, we are gonna have a much more active waterfront. And I think that, you know, Hastings is in, although they're still a long way away, I guess. But, you know, they're anticipating the same thing. So, you know, we're, this is an opportunity also for all three municipalities to work together. Costs will be minimal. There is a plan already that the chiefs have worked out in terms of which officers and when they will be patrolling with the marine unit. And again, I think it sort of fits in, at least from Dobbs Ferry's priorities. While we are concerned about costs, we also, you know, wanna make sure that we're keeping everybody safe. And with this new, beautiful new park, it's gonna be getting a lot more water use. It does seem to make a lot of sense, particularly in the way it's gonna be costed and shared out. Chief, do you want to add anything at all? I think you kinda gave us everything we needed last week. We just weren't kinda ready for it. Did anybody have any questions for the chief, or we've been through this, everybody okay?
I think we need to reiterate the boat is free.
The boat is free. Yeah, it's a very, very expensive boat, but it's at no cost. And the fact that it's brand-new means that the maintenance costs on it are gonna be probably relatively low for the next couple of years. It is true, at the end of the day, that a boat is a hole in the water that you pour money into eventually, but they've been made a lot better these days and more efficient. So, and, you know, we'll share those costs out, so. Okay, so we'll see. Let's move this forward. Action item number 10, then, is to, is I'll take a motion to approve an IMA. That's an intermunicipality agreement with the villages of Hastings on Hudson and Irvington for a marine unit and maintenance of a police boat. We do have the IMA here. You don't have to read through the whole thing, but it really does cover the entire agreement. It does provide indemnification and save harmless reciprocal for the three villages to each other. It is a one-year term. It's only a one-year term. And it does have a 30-day notice period. So, you know, if we don't think it's working out, or we have any concerns, then we can, you know, we can opt out. So it's a very, very short term. And then it just has a lot of legalese in there that IMA agreements would usually have. So is there a motion to approve the IMA as outlined? Trustee Kay, Second, Trustee O'Donnell, all in favor? And that passes with four ayes. Action item number 11 is to consider a motion to accept the police boat from New York State Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. This will be at no cost to the village. Obviously, this goes in with the IMA agreement that we've talked about. So action item number 11, then, we do need to move this forward, and I'll take a motion to accept the police boat from the New York State Parks Recreation Historic Preservation, which will be at no cost to the village. Is there a motion? Trustee Kay, Second, Trustee Cassell, discussion? All in favor? And that passes with four ayes.
Mayor, I did notice that the Sustainable Westchester folks have arrived, as has Nina, so that if you would like, we can do the presentation now.
For a five-minute presentation.
Five-minute presentation?
Sure. We can stop here, so we'll circle back to action item number nine. And do you need to turn the lights off or get things fired up there? So again, this is just gonna be a presentation, Nina, you're gonna, Nina Orville or some other folks that are here to talk a little bit more about the Community Choice Aggregation Program, which Jeff outlined a little bit. We're not anticipating, we're not gonna take any action on this, so this will be a good opportunity for us to learn more about the program and have more discussion about it at another time.
Somebody? Somebody coming up?
Somebody, and if you could, we got about five.
I'll just say a couple words.
Great, yes.
Okay. Great. So I'm Nina Orville, and Community Choice Aggregation is an initiative that people from the organization now Sustainable Westchester have been working on for a number of years. And a pilot program in Westchester County was just recently enabled by the Public Service Commission. So this is a new opportunity that municipalities in Westchester County have the opportunity to consider participating in. About 20 municipalities so far in the county have had presentations regarding this opportunity. A number of them have already voted to adopt resolutions to participate, and a number of others have those votes scheduled. So it's an opportunity to aggregate the demand of electricity and natural gas of residents and small commercial users from throughout a municipality in order to negotiate for better prices and to have more control over the source of that energy. And it's an exciting opportunity that's been implemented elsewhere as well.
Okay. Thanks, Nina. So I'm Mike Gordon. I'm a co-chair of Sustainable Westchester. We are 41 out of the 44 municipalities. We are dues-paying municipalities, as you well know. And our focus is to both reduce emissions comprehensively across the region and to create savings opportunities together, and ultimately to develop a more sustainable and a green economy itself to create jobs as a result of our actions. And so, as Nina mentioned, Community Choice Aggregation is something that we've been working on for three and a half years. And we finally did get authorization from the state as the first county in the state to be authorized to go ahead and do community choice aggregation. And basically, what it is, is that our electricity bills, and everybody knows, everybody gets messages from these electricity marketers saying, hey, come on over, we got a better rate. And then, you know, three months down the line, four months down the line, maybe you still have a better rate, and maybe you don't. But the way the electricity bill works is that it's actually two bills. You have the actual electricity or natural gas, it's the same thing, and that's the power plant actually generating the electricity, and that's one part of your bill. And then another part of your bill is the poles and wires. It's the delivery. And so the way Community Choice Aggregation works is that the poles and wires stays exactly where it is. It's Con Edison. That's precisely who does do it now, and that's who does it even in the event of Community Choice Aggregation. But many years ago, in its infinite wisdom, the state decided that whether you wanted to or not, the other portion of your bill, the electricity portion of your bill, was also going to be Con Ed if you did nothing. If you, you know, you are defaulted to this private sector company, Con Ed, perfectly valid, valuable company. But in fact, Con Ed is precluded from state practices, Uniform Business Practices, from actually making money on the electricity portion of the bill. So Con Ed really doesn't care about this portion of the bill. They care about the poles and wires portion of the bill. What Community Choice Aggregation does is any municipality that chooses to participate in it, the default supplier moves from Con Ed to whoever that locality designates. So instead of that decision being made statewide that it's gonna be Con Ed or it's gonna be NICEG, that decision becomes the locality's decision with respect to where your default provider is. And since 75% of the people have not switched to a competitive supplier, have chosen not or haven't chosen, they just haven't done it, and perhaps for quite good reason, which is that they don't have the aggregated clout to actually get a really good deal. And second of all, they don't necessarily have the time to actually take a look and make sure that the rate today is the same rate that you agreed to contractually three months ago. It's really not our job to actually focus and track down every minute of our power bill. So many people, in fact, do not take advantage of the competitive electricity market. What this does is it changes the default supplier. So everything remains the same. In fact, everything except your bill. So the structure is that you get a bill from Con Ed still. That bill is a unified bill that includes your poles and wires cost and as well your cost of electricity. It's just that the bill is lower. So the structure that we are working on with Community Choice Aggregation, and if you guys choose to proceed, we'll prepare a resolution for you, the structure that we're working on is that either there will be a guaranteed discount. So in the event that the municipality does it, Dobbs Ferry residents would automatically, unless they specifically said otherwise, they would automatically become part of the Community Choice aggregator. We would send out for bid, and we would only sign a contract if one of two things is the case. Either, one, the price is guaranteed to be consistently and always lower than the utility price to compare. Or, two, we get a fixed rate, and this is a remarkable opportunity with natural gas prices at a 13-year low. We get a fixed rate which is lower than the trailing average. So we average out the last 12 months, and if we get a fixed rate that's lower than that, fantastic, we can sign a deal. It's like fixing your mortgage when interest rates are low. Now, the neat thing about how we're setting it up is that anybody can opt out at any time. So let's say you are quote-unquote defaulted to a fixed rate, and that fixed rate is lower than the utility average. If, in fact, the utility rate goes down, you can simply move back to the utility. So it actually acts as a cap. And so many people have said that we're discussing tax issues of 50, 100, 150 dollars. Well, this is an opportunity prospectively, and obviously, we don't sign a contract until it's, unless it's an advantageous contract, but it is prospectively an opportunity to save our residents $300, $400, $500, $600 a year. Because Con Ed cannot fix rates, and in this environment, it's a quite good opportunity. So that's the skinny. I know that you've been, you know, tracking me down, Glenn, with whatever it is that you could on the board, but I'm just, I guess, open it up to questions and clarifications about exactly how it works.
I have two questions.
Go ahead.
So it doesn't require 100% of the population joining?
Nope.
And does it include anybody who's, say, not with Con Ed but doing business with other companies?
Interesting question. They can opt in, but they have to beware, because some of these contracts, unlike any contract that we're gonna sign, has an exit fee.
Right.
And so they have to look at the small print on the contract or wait until the contract expires and then opt in. But they're not gonna get a formal notification that says opt out or, you know, opt out to actually stay with your current, they're not even gonna get that. It won't affect them at all unless they actively choose to opt into it. Say, I wanna join.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I just wanna mention one thing, which is, we've had a number of our residents install solar and go into a net metering. Would you talk a little bit about what happens with net metering?
This is great, because I love the questions, because they're both, like, critical informed questions around the critical foci. It has no impact. You still get that net metering. In fact, if we are going to be applying for community solar in the pilots, which we expect we are, where you can transfer a solar unit from one place to a house across the street, in fact, that what we're hearing is that communities that are community choice aggregating communities are gonna be considered, that's gonna be considered an advantage. And sometime when I have, you know, seven minutes of relaxed time, I'll explain exactly how, but I won't do it to you now.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Mike, we'll want to hear more about this. I'm pretty familiar with these programs. The pricings are interesting. You know, I would be concerned about the, you know, the risk of default of the energy supplier and how are customers protected and what liability does the village have if we've been promoting?
Another great question.
Promoting? Because that can happen. You talk about these guys setting prices. Well, fine. I have a good idea how they do that, and yet prices can continue to go low. They can't make their margin calls and they default. All of a sudden, they can't deliver the electricity.
It's a great question. And so, three things. One, our credit requirements are gonna be steeper, starker than the independent system operators' credit requirements. Two, if a supplier says, we guarantee that we're always going to beat Con Ed's price, again, let the buyer beware, because you have to be cautious. You have to have a good, credit-worthy supplier, quite extensively credit-worthy for that kind of a contract. I don't know that we're gonna get that kind of an offer, and even if we do, we have to be cautious about that offer. The third piece is a fixed price. And our strategy on fixed pricing is that, A, you have to be hedged, and B, you have to novate. And by that, I mean that if you've purchased your hedge to that contract, and you have to commit that not only your, that not only the contract, but the hedge for that contract will transfer, that we can transfer the entire kit and caboodle should you go out of business. And that's strategically how we're gonna do with the fixed pricing. Hedge plus novate, make it transferable, in essence. That's our approach.
It may not be so easy, because it's not so easy to novate those things sometimes. But, I mean, that's, I think the important thing is getting a credit-worthy counterparty.
Yeah.
And that's what you really want, is know that people that are doing this are capable of, if they're gonna be offering fixed price, that they can perform on it. And that requires them to have a hedge that could go against them, but do they have the margin ability to continue to perform?
Yeah, and you're paying for that hedge, so the money's out the door from the beginning, and then your counterparty who's offering you the hedge also has to have that credit worthiness. Absolutely spot on.
Any other questions for Mike?
That sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll get, we'll get this report, we'll get this presentation. Jeff, I think that's the plan, and then we'll digest, and we'll definitely look forward to hearing more about this. It's very exciting.
Excellent. Thank you. And we're wide open to be subjected to another hour if you really wanna put yourself through it. That's a lot.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Nina.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you, Nina.
Okay. Let's see, where were we? Now we're gonna go back to 12, I think, right?
Twelve, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, action item number 12 is to consider a resolution adopting a home rule request, asking the state legislature to adopt Senate Bill S-4867, which is authorizing the village of Dobbs Ferry to offer an optional 20-year retirement plan to certain police officers employed by the village. Gosh, I just think that this keeps rotating back, but we've been through this before. It's really sort of a clerical.
Yeah.
We're just trying to correct the clerical issue.
I'm going to explain each of these individually as they come up, because it is a little confusing how it's all hitting us all at once. On March 10th, the board did adopt a resolution and a home rule for the assembly bill for this same issue on the police retirement. At that time, we did not adopt a Senate bill or a home rule request. So, we were informed by Mr. Abenanti's office as well as Senator Stuart Cousins' office that we needed to do the same for the Senate bill for this one issue. So, that's why this one is on the agenda right now. This was not adopted previously. The wording is exactly the same with the exception of the number of the bill, because it's a Senate bill rather than an assembly bill.
The reason for that is because we didn't have the bill number for the Senate bill. We had the assembly but not the Senate. So, that's why we had to adopt two separate ones.
Okay. Sorry about that. Let me show we got that.
But this is just Part B.
Okay.
Part B.
So, that's the explanation, which was on the, on this particular item. So, we can move this forward, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'll take a motion to adopt the home rule request. This is asking the state legislator to adopt Senate Bill S-4867. Now, all the dates and everything have been worked out. The resolution here, we have. And I think it was, thank you, Liz, for explaining it. Is there a motion? Trustee Cassell, second. Trustee K., all in favor, and that passes with four ayes. Action item number 13 is, we're going to probably need Liz's help here again. Consider a resolution adopting a home rule request, asking the state legislator to adopt Senate Bill S-5187 and the assembly bill for residential parking permit system for certain streets.
Okay. Last one, the board actually did adopt both the assembly and Senate bill on this, on our board meeting of April 14th. This request to do that came at the request, actually, of the Assemblyman's Office and the Senator's Office, so we took care of that right away. Our promptness, perhaps they didn't expect us to be so quick to responding because our, we actually got the request from them on April 10th. We got it on the agenda for April 14th, and now they've contacted us and asked why we adopted it so quickly, because it was only brought to the Senate and Assembly floors on April 22nd. So, therefore, we
So, are you saying we work a lot better than the New York State Assembly?
I think.
Are you surprised?
I said we ticked pretty quickly. So, at any rate, we just, we need to adopt these both again and resubmit this to the Assembly and the Senate in order to get them to move forward on it. So, that's why this is being adopted. Again, it's the same thing as the board adopted a couple of weeks ago.
Do they know we're doing it tonight, and is it okay?
Yes, but I mean, I asked them like 40 times, so we're good. I confirmed it and reconfirmed it.
Great, Liz. Thanks very much. This is a really important one. We had a number of residents that came to the last meeting we had when we discussed this. Donna, you put a lot of fill-in on this as well. I mean, this really does, can really help the village address some of the parking issues that we have on certain neighborhood streets. The police chief has really been very much involved in this, and just basically gives us as a village much more strategy in terms of, you know, really helping residents and creating, you know, new parking. And we know that people are taking advantage, coming in from out of town, and we can really start controlling and policing that a lot better. It's not the answer to all the problems, but it really will help a lot. So, on that, then, I'll take a motion to adopt home rule. This is asking the state legislator to adopt Senate Bill S-4867, right?
Yeah.
No, S-5187. Right, S-5187, and the assembly bill for residential parking permit system for certain streets. Trustee Cassell, second trustee K., discussion, anything else? All in favor? That passes with four ayes. Great. Thanks, Liz. And we're getting there. Action item number 14 is to consider a motion to appoint Nancy
Excuse me, Mayor. On that last item is we passed the Senate bill. We need to pass both the Senate and Assembly.
Assembly bill too.
I think I said it.
He didn't give the number, though.
Assembly bill is A-7436.
All right, so the resolution then was adopting Senate Bill S-5187. We did that?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll take a motion to adopt the assembly bill. Is that right?
Yes.
What is the number?
What is the number? I don't have it.
A-7436.
Yes.
Okay, for residential parking permit system for certain streets. Trustee Cassell, second trustee O'Donnell, discussion, all in favor? Okay, that passes with four ayes. So, we'll have that all sorted out in the minutes, and then it'll be proper on the home rule request that we sent. Consider a motion to appoint Nancy Volotek as a member of the nominating committee for a term of one year. Can I get a motion on that? Trustee K., second trustee O'Donnell, discussion, all in favor? Passed with four ayes. Want to thank Nancy. I know she's been involved at a number of different levels, and she's got really good energy, and glad to see her getting more involved. She really can be one of many, many people that make a big difference. So, thanks, Nancy, for giving your time. Action item number 15, consider a motion authorizing the extension of the contract to Village Manager Marcus Serrano for a term of three years. Is there a motion? Trustee O'Donnell, second trustee Cassell, discussion, all in favor? That passes with four ayes. We'd have more than that if everybody were here. Congratulations, Marcus, and look forward to hanging around for, well, at least another three years.
Thank you.
And hopefully longer than that. Thanks. Well done. Okay, and we had one more that we had to add, which was another home rule.
We just did it.
Oh, that was the one we did?
No, 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 no.
The hotel.
No, it's the hotel.
Oh, my God.
Okay, sorry. One more item. This was, we added at the beginning, and this is a resolution adopting a home rule request, asking the state legislator to adopt Senate Bill Number S-4281. We've been through this a number of times. This is essentially a bill or a request that is being made by the town of Greenberg, all the villages that make up the town of Greenberg, the six villages, as well as the town, the village of Sleepy Hollow, and I think, there's another, Mount Pleasant or some others?
Mount Pleasant.
We're jumping on this, but we have, really have the full, well, we've had the support of some of our legislators on this. This would be, this is the Senate, so Andrew Stuart Cousins would get behind this. But this is essentially just giving the village the right to impose a special hotel tax. And, because other municipalities in the state of New York have that. They have that ability to do that. So, this is about proper representation and taxation fairness, as well as, you know, that's really what it's about at the end of the day. But it obviously would be very applicable for Dobbs Ferry, too.
And Liz got some background on this, was re-approved it too, so she gave some background what happened.
Okay, yeah, Liz, real quick.
Sorry, real quick. This afternoon, late this afternoon, I actually received a call from Mr. Abenanti's office, and they informed this. This was originally adopted by the board on March 10th. They informed me this afternoon. It only went to the Senate floor on March 11th. So, there again, we were too quick and efficient. We adopted it too early. We just need to adopt that now for that purpose.
That's great. Thanks, Liz. Okay, so, take a motion? Trustee O'Donnell, second trustee Cassell, discussion, all in favor? Great, passes with four ayes. Thanks very much. Got through all that. Let's move to the minutes. This will be for the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for
No, we're stuck. I was absent.
Oh, so we have to table this until we have a quorum. Okay, just make a note of that, Liz. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Okay, reports. Quick little update on the waterfront. We talked about that a lot tonight, but we're good to go, June 13th, for our ceremony starting at noon. We're kind of putting the program together now, and it'll be a fun day, and we'll get more out on that. But we did send, you know, we've been sending out, I think, notices on that. So, again, June 13th will be the official rededication date for the new waterfront park, and we expect to get started on the, at 12 o'clock noon. There is a meeting that we're going to be with the waterfront committee in another week or so, the 28th, which we'll be talking a little bit more about that, and of course, sharing ideas. And it's going to be, I think, simple but a really fun day, and we'll have a lot of things going on, and speakers and everything else. So, looking forward to that. Any other reports from the trustees at all here? Kathy?
It's senior week, and I just want to, there's so many people to thank, and really, from the staff down there, Mike, Matt, Amy, Carmella, and to Gary and Treza for making it look so pretty and clean. Thank you. The kids at St. Chris come and help serve. The restaurants all donate something during the week to supplement. The lunch is there. Stop and Shop was there today. They had, they sent a nutritionist to speak, and then they handed out little bags of groceries to everyone. I mean, really, very, very generous. Tomorrow, there'll be a Dixieland jazz band. Thursday will be line dancing and zumba. And then there is a dinner dance, as always, on Friday night, and that'd be catered by Half Moon. It is just so delightful down there, and they really, really enjoy it. And if anybody, any year wants to come and help out, we can always use extra hands during the week. And all of you guys that didn't, Marcus, Liz, you didn't get your bracelets. You have to go down and get your bracelets. You're not getting one. But it's really nice to see. It really is such a collective effort. And now, it's 11 years old, this, this is our 11th anniversary. It's a pretty well-oiled machine, and it's just filled every day with stuff to do, movies, bargeon, bingo, I mean, everything. So, and upcoming events, because that's not enough. They'll have line dancing with Diane on May 28th. The senior barbecue is June 9th. The PBA pizza and pasta dinner is June 11th. And then June 12th is the intergenerational ice cream social. So, it's good to be a senior in our River towns. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Any other reports at all?
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy and Parrot, I mean Abby and Parrot. I forgot to thank them. Thank you guys. I forgot their names. I forgot who they are. Thank you. Okay, I'm done.
I just wanted to mention a lot of the things. We see a lot of email in terms of our buildings and land use, and you have a chance to put your two cents in. On Sunday, May 31st, the Sustainable Dobbs will be holding a conversation at the library about buildings and land use. How can we shape our built environment from buildings to parks, parking lots to playgrounds to ensure that we are creating a sustainable future? So, that time is from 4:00 to 5:30. This is the last in the series of talks that the Energy Task Force is having. Very important for you if you want to have your opinions put forth by the Energy Task Force as it goes ahead and creates the Climate Action Plan over the course of the next couple of months.
And I forgot one more person. I forgot Tony Lozzy, who does so much. I know.
Oh, boy.
I just got a pain in my head, but it's been Tony telling me. I forgot him. Thank you, Tony, for all you do, and they'll be sending pictures for all of you to see.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. And just one last thing here. I got some received correspondence from Commander Bill Florin of the American Legion, just announcing that this year's Memorial Day services will be held on Monday, May 25th. And this parade, as it traditionally does, will commence at Mohegan Park Avenue at 10:00 a.m., and will march through the village and ultimately to the monument at Memorial Park. Refreshments will be served at the Embassy Center on Palisades Street. So, this is for the benefit of the board members, and would love, you know, it's great to see more people, many people along the parade route. So, I just wanted to announce that, and I want to thank the American Legion and Commander Florin for all they do. Okay, I think that's it. Thanks, everybody, for all your comments, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. There'll be no further business. Meeting is adjourned.